Okay, we've had lots of activity on the teleconference. Who's there and who isn't? Lisa, are you still there?
Yes.
Ann, are you still ... Art, you're there. Ann, are you still there?
Yeah.
Okay, good, thanks.
So, thank you. A little lighthearted introduction to what is a serious and important topic, I think. It's really my pleasure to be involved in this particular crew project. Trustees up to speed with our progress on the Modern Library. This has been a topic that's been brought forward as a discussion item a number of times to trustees now through books, blogs, and tweets, namely. There is a crew charter, it's R26, called the Modern Library. And the crew charter, if you go to it in the crew book, the crew manual, you'll see this phrase leading it off. "Our libraries must change to serve the 21st century learner, 21st century classroom, 21st century school, and 21st century community." Now, that phrase, 21st century, identified there four times. We maybe need to remind ourselves, we're already 10 years into the 21st century. So, I think there is some urgency around this, but we also want to proceed with caution because we understand the implications that this project will have on our schools and learning opportunities for students, certainly. But really, what we're trying to do through this project is transform what we're currently calling our libraries into what we would like to be recognized as Learning Commons. And when we got started on this project, Ron, Tim, and I were quite influenced in the early days by the Ontario School Libraries Association, and in particular, this document called Teaching Together for Learning, which is a very good primer on how the library association is starting to view this concept that they call the Learning Commons. But Tim and I, and Ron, also had an opportunity earlier this year to attend the Librarians' Association Annual Conference in Toronto. And that was a very good opportunity for us to see firsthand how different boards are still having different interpretations of what the Learning Commons means in our schools. And so, we wanted to be very, very firm going into this project, that we wanted to develop a model that would reflect UCDSB ideals, a UCDSB vision. So, we're really trying to develop, put in place, the foundation for what we would call the UCDSB Learning Commons. And before we got going too far and too quickly into the specifics of this, we wanted to take some time to develop what we called a foundation for a Learning Commons model for UCDSB schools. So, we really started with these basic premises, certainly interpreted and influenced somewhat by this document, but also through elements that we think are specific to the UCDSB. For example, a foundation of this, in our opinion, is that everyone must be seen as a learner engaged in the learning process. Very, very important. Secondly, an effective Learning Commons will accommodate all learners and address multiple learning styles and learning levels. What a huge opportunity we have through this project to develop that kind of learning environment. Very important. Technology is a support, not a solution. We continue to see in some of our school boards, some of our schools, the idea that if we just had the technology, it would all work fine. But technology, of course, is much more than that. Technology is a tool. It starts with a good, solid foundation of the learning environments that we're trying to create, and then the technology follows. Very important that we understand that as we move forward with this. Learning to learn is a critical component of student success. And teachers are learning coaches, the facilitators of new learning. It's virtually impossible for a teacher now, in this big communication world of ours, to compete with the World Wide Web in terms of access to information. The teacher is no longer the vehicle for all information like teachers used to be in the 20th century. So, we need to understand that the teacher has a new role in our schools, to be the facilitators of new learning. And that can be helped along through the Learning Commons model. Virtual and physical learning partnerships extend collaboration. The Learning Commons encourages divergent thinking and new ways of sharing information. The Learning Commons plays a unique role in fostering cultural growth and a sense of local identity. This is a very important one. Character education is at the soul of the Learning Commons. You'll see as we present this idea to you, we're seeing more and more opportunities through the Learning Commons to create highly collaborative learning environments. And if we're going to move forward in that idea, in that concept, we have to bear in mind the virtues of character education that drive everything that we do in our schools. And finally, as a foundation, the Learning Commons can help to connect participants beyond the school. This is a very, very powerful component of the Learning Commons. So, having put those foundations into place, we then got thinking about, how can we break this down into manageable pieces that align with where we see the vision on the UCDSB Learning Commons? And what we came up with were these three branches in our development of a Learning Commons model. Number one, physical space. We have to have common agreement throughout the board on this concept of whole school versus library. Right now, in most of our schools, we have what you would call a library. We want to develop a Learning Commons which takes on a whole-school approach. When we went to the Library Association Conference, we still saw a fairly high degree of evidence that many school board schools librarians still interpret the Learning Commons to be specific to what they used to call the library space. We're saying in our model, that's important, but it needs to extend throughout the whole school. Secondly, virtual space. We know that we need to develop better access to online resources and provide opportunities for our schools to develop online sharing and collaboration. And thirdly, roles and responsibilities. What exactly is needed, and what does this look like? And how do we communicate this so everybody's on the same page throughout our system? So, that's as far as we're at right now. We've presented this model to the senior team, and we have an endorsement from the senior team of this particular vision model, if you will, of the Learning Commons. Our next step, and we're not there yet, we're just now in the process of organizing what I would call an implementation committee, I might prefer the wording, high-performance team. We'll have some representation from principals across our system, from the HR department and from IT department, to help us prepare our schools for the inception of this concept as early as September 2011, understanding that, of course, it will take time to implement this fully. But of course, communication continues to be our main challenge in this board, and we'll be working very hard to make sure that our communication devices roll out smoothly. Through the implementation committee, we'll be working to develop clear and consistent understanding of how school staff assignments can be used to promote collaborative and innovative spaces. We'll also be looking at the use of non-classroom time to staff the UCDSB Learning Commons. And we already have some examples in our board of effective practice in this respect. We've paid school visits to Thousand Island Secondary School, for example. North Dundas School is another example, where they already have a variety of staff in the school using the Learning Commons as a common area. So, they're sharing expertise, they're sharing staff time, and as a result, they've created very, very collaborative environments where there's sharing going on between student and student, teacher and teacher, teacher and student. We will need to look at the library technician job title and responsibilities to make sure that that aligns as well with the vision for Learning Commons. And we'll need to look at online resources. We have right now, in the vast majority of our schools, books that simply are not used by the students in the school. I can say that outright. We know because we've visited the schools and we've heard directly from the staff in the schools. In particular, the nonfiction sections of most of our libraries have books and resources that are not being used by students. And so, we need to find a way to develop a protocol that will allow us to create other opportunities for students to access this type of information. We think that we can do this through really effective online resources, and we have many, many other sources, other school board sources. Waterloo is a leader, for example, in this respect, and we think we can use that to our advantage. So, through all of this, we see some very, very clear outcomes, some real opportunities for improved student learning. We can see through this that we'll have supervised student access in our Learning Commons throughout the school day. A very, very positive outcome from this project. We can see in our vision, highly collaborative teaching and learning between students and staff, and we can see an advancement of flexible learning environments throughout each school. And we're very, very excited in that respect. And maybe with that, I'll give Ron an opportunity here to wrap things up with his perspective on the work that we've done so far and the opportunities that it affords.
Yeah, I guess I've talked to a number of the people on the ground about this, the teachers, the principals, and across the board. They get pretty excited about this. It's something a lot of them want to see happen, and they see the benefits for students. So, we've had a lot of positive feedback from the people that would actually be benefiting from this kind of shift in thinking away from maybe our traditional libraries to a more collaborative, digital media-type resource. So, we're pretty excited about it. I think it's going to be powerful for our candidate school board.
Okay, thank you. Comments, questions, trustees?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay. You can start, Ann.
Okay. You made mention of accommodations for all learners, and learning is learning. And I'd just like to point out, I'm very interested in the Learning Commons model, but there's one area I'm hoping that we won't forget about, and that is, in a lot of families, there is very little, especially in larger families, there's very little quiet space in some of those homes. And so, traditionally, the library provided a space for, a quiet space, or an area for a lack of distraction. And there are, in fact, I think, children that need those areas where there is a lack of distraction, or an area where they can reflect, have an opportunity for some individual perspective as well. And I just want to encourage that that concept also be incorporated into this Learning Commons model. Not to be, I'm all for collaborative learning and that type of thing, but there's also, I feel, libraries did provide that positive environment for that as well. And I'm hoping that that somehow will be also incorporated into the Learning Commons model. Now, I haven't been there to see the video, and maybe that's in the pictures that, or the videos shown, but would you like to comment on that? Do you understand where I'm coming from?
Did you hear, you heard the comments all right?
I did. Thank you, and through you, Chair. I think it's a very, very good point. In the school visits that we've had so far, that has actually been incorporated in the vision of Learning Commons. And in fact, and I apologize if our presentation of collaboration has overwhelmed the importance of what Trustee McCray has indicated. In the schools we've seen, there has been spaces developed within the Learning Commons that do provide that area of the school for reflective time for students. And I think that's duly noted, and you'll see that incorporated within the physical space concept that rolls out with the Learning Commons model.
Okay, thank you. Ann, hi, it's Lisa. May I make a comment?
I'll get you in here. I'll put you on the list, okay? Thanks, Lisa. Student trustee Castleman.
I was just wondering if this Learning Commons model meant that library technician hours would be cut further?
So, we're not, right now, we're still trying to figure out what that's going to look like. But in some discussions that we've had, we see an increase of the role. It's not about changing what they're doing as far as the time that they're in the schools, but rather maybe their skill set and what we're requiring of them, and how we're kind of helping them be able to help students that are using digital resources rather than just the traditional paper copies of books. So, we haven't got that far down the road yet, but certainly in our discussions and the model we're envisioning, I would say, no. I mean, we're, we want, we still see them as a valuable partner in this. We just may have to change their role to incorporate other aspects as well.
The only reason I say that is because there was a concern that was brought up at a school council meeting that I attended a few months ago. And a few parents were concerned that as we shifted away from the traditional library, that the accessibility of that traditional space would be limited to students, because I know that at my school, at least, the library space last year, the access to it was quite limited. So, I think that was a concern that was expressed by a number of parents that I just want to make sure that people recognize.
Through you, Chair. The fact is that we're not even at the resource base, and whether it's technicians or teachers or different groups that were there, it's premature to even make that comment. The fact is, right now, at Thousand Island Secondary School, the Tugwa, North Dundas, the model, has teachers involved, the learning resource coaches involved, the vice principals involved, there are a number of people always available in the library, and not just a technician, not just a this, not just. And I think for us today, the microphone to sort of be committed to resources would be inappropriate, because I think that there has to be a wide range of discussion about who's the right person in there. As we teach our librarians and different people, and they all have a role to play. And the Learning Commons, the library's open all the time. It's open up from eight o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock at night, and how it's staffed and how it is, is very important. Also, we've heard from the student voice, very clear, the students. Particularly, the students who are being 16 and 19 in schools, they don't want to be monitored like a 10- or 11-year-old in a library. As the one young man explained to me at the session I was at, he said, "Mr. Thomas, I am the assistant manager of a little food store, and I bank $10,000 on a Saturday night, and I oversee eight staff. And I come into the library afraid I'm going to steal a National Geographic." And I said to him, "Well, that's not what this is about." I said, "It's about honoring all of us in our journey." And the library will look different as we go through. So, all of those people will play a role, and students will play a role, certainly up in Elmont. The session I was at, there was quite a few students that didn't understand why they could not be in the library in different places at different times, and why they had to be treated as suspects. It was the word that was used with me. And I think we have to honor the students' voice as well as every other voice in this particular debate. And so, the resort, the technical resource of people have not been applied to this. I think it's going to be very important for us to see what's happening at Thousand Islands, what's happening at North Dundas, and how we've been able to maintain at Tugwa what we're doing.
Trustee McPherson.
Just a question. You talked about, how would you put, calling your book collections. And I remember touring a couple of schools that were closing libraries for a move, and parents were appalled by the number of books that were being left behind. And, but I want to follow an avenue of electronic learning. We have a multitude of devices today, and I won't even attempt to start naming them. My kids have got half of them, it seems. Do you see a point where students will be able to download eBooks as such for both reading and research? Now, right now, this is available through most of your local libraries. If you have a library card, you can log on to, say, the Smith Falls Library site, and you can tour for the next two hours on the Ontario Library System, getting whatever book you want to download it. And it takes about 45 seconds. Do you see us advancing to that stage? And I emphasize advance, because I've been in a few schools since the election, and I would say that about 90% of people are embracing the concept that it was a library in the 20th century. In the 21st century, it's going to be a resource center. And so, do you see us going in that direction?
Mr. Dawes or Mr. Ferguson?
Through you, Chair. Yes. I, just to give you an idea of what some of the students are at, and what Director Thomas said, I asked a group of students that question, if they would like to use that, and it was about 30 students in the library, and 29 of them put their hand up and said absolutely, that they would like to see that happen. And that's who we're here to serve, and I think that's what they want. That's what they want to use. So, you know, some schools are doing that. We've saw some places on our research that they've gone down that road, and they've had huge success with that. Expressed some, some of the students that maybe weren't interested before being able to use, you know, a digital device, an e-reader. They were much more likely to read with that, so.
Okay, trustee Swan.
Hi. I still very much am concerned about the value of books for youth, especially younger students, which are learning to read. And I'm wondering what the impact will be on their having access to these books with these common learning libraries.
Director? First of all, a great question for a person like myself, who is probably the greatest book collector maybe in the room. I love to put my hands on the material. And we know the kids in our, particularly our early entry programs are going to be involved in a great number of learning materials. In all of our schools now, without a single exception, every one of our schools has what we call a leveled books, and a leveled book part in their school. In some cases, it's in the library, in other cases, it's in the teacher's resource storage area, where we have thousands of books that are leveled at the readers, and the teachers move those books in and out of their classrooms by the hundreds over the course of a year. And what happens, they sign them in and out, and you have books at every single level from pre-K all the way to advanced grade eight books that would be leveled, that the teachers could specifically use for writing. And there isn't a school now in our system that does not have a leveled books room that supports the Learning Commons or the library. And in every single one of our classrooms, good primary classrooms, you'll have your own in-school, in-classroom library that is supported through the library technician and also what's happening in the leveled books rooms. Ian, would you like to comment? I know this is in your area as well.
Just a couple of comments. Yeah, I think, I think there's a mistake that we're talking about virtual technology, we're eliminating paper technology. I don't think that's, it's not an either-or proposition. I think what we're wrestling with is how do we best position materials that support student learning, where they can be used to access and create and understanding and meaning by our students? So, I think one of the challenges is to stay focused on what the goal of a Learning Commons or school library is. What's the original purpose? The original purpose of a school library was to create an archive of learning materials that would support the students' acquisition of the curriculum. It wasn't meant to be a public library, although lots of those pieces got manifest, but the original concept of the school library was to make sure that there was a repository of those materials made available. What's really changed now is that we don't always have to physically have those materials in the building where we are. So, those materials can be accessed through devices, and the actual repository of the information might be on some data server somewhere in Texas or something. So, that brings some new challenges, but it also brings some new opportunities. I think it also speaks to the way that we try and put the content in the hands of the students and teachers just in time. And again, the example that Director Thomas just cited is one way that rather than bringing kids down to the library to pick out a book, which there's nothing wrong with that concept, there are times where teachers may choose to bring the books to the students. So, I think it's important to not think so much just about the input, but what's the best way to achieve the output of getting the information that our students need to learn and grow in their hands at the point in time where they most need it.
Okay, and may I ask the second part of my question, then?
Go ahead, trustee Swan.
There was talk about you've consulted people, principals, and teachers. I didn't hear consulting library technicians. Are they part of this process in the consultation of how to develop these Learning Commons?
Director, do you just want to go back just over the little history of how we got here?
We've had library technicians involved, and this is from the very beginning. Now, this began, was a series over high schools, where the students had an absolutely legitimate beef with the school and with the school board, that because of staffing and because of declining enrollment, they found significant portions of the week that the library, well, the school was open, the library was not being staffed, and thus it was closed. And Ian and I were given the task of examining the libraries, and we came across, and we had many meetings, and one in particular where we had all stakeholders involved, and we had separate meetings for librarians, we've had separate meetings for library technicians and all staff. And they've been, we've been working with them, and they continue to be an important advisor to both Ron and Phil and Tim as they move forward, and they will be given this information in draft form as well.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee McAllister.
I have a multitude of questions, really. I understand that the technology has changed, the concept has changed. I mean, even I, last week, was given the gift of a Kindle, so I'm inching my way into the 21st century to a certain extent. Mr. Dawes, the, through you, Chair. One of the, you stated that one of the foundations of the Learning Commons are fairly new. I would just suggest to you that they are not new, and that, but they are, in fact, the principles of good teaching and effective learning, and I'm sure you would agree with that. But I guess, here is my question. One of the roles of a teacher, librarian, or librarian technician, is or was to teach students how to conduct research, and how to research effectively. It's one thing to have all this electronic data available, and we are bombarded by it. How do we organize it? How do we seek the right kind of research for the project that one is doing?
Can I come to the director first?
First of all, pedagogically speaking, every single teacher, not just a teacher librarian, certainly not a library technician, because their role is not to teach, but every single teacher, I, in my science background, I had a role to play in teaching, to teach all of my students in front of me, the proper research in my particular discipline, and then be working with the teacher librarian, so my kids are coming down to work with the following. This is what I'm working on a room, this is a study, principles I want to use to be followed, and then we would work together as we go through. And what we have to recognize, and Phil, Ian, and Ron, you may want to go further, one of the things that we are here, as we totally agree with you, John, where you're taking this, trustee McAllister, is that it's the quality of the research going in. One of our concerns right now, as a group, is the quality of the research going on, whatever discipline that is involved, and that when our students go and do a search, whether it's a Google search right up to speed, what is a, what is a good source, what is a poor source? And to move to the next level, what would be giving you the accurate information for you to make the proposal that you have in your essay or your assignment more valid as you take a look at? So, that's important. And what we're recognizing with our, with the Library Association, all of us play a role in teaching that, and I think you would recognize that as well. The other piece that we take a look at this is a reminder that the libraries are open in our public libraries as well. And what we have to recognize, that we have to be available to help our kids with, is this good, quality, rigorous material I'm looking at, or is this something that perhaps would be looked at in the discipline as fluff as we go through? Ian, perhaps you can also, we've debated this, like this, we're going through, perhaps you'd like to comment on this as well through the chair.
Superintendent Carswell?
Just giving more to collect my thoughts. I was in the middle without any spoken.
Sure. Do you have anything that you want to add to this, sort of, in your work in the project?
Well, just as a reflection, Chair. When we went to the Library Association Conference, I was struck in particular by panel discussion that I was able to witness. This was with the CEOs of libraries from Columbia University, Western University, and Guelph. And they touched on exactly this issue, that, you know, through Learning Commons, and not to jump too far into our process to be able to articulate precise roles at this point, but there certainly is a need for students and population in general to learn how to use web applications, social media to conduct research. There's a gap in that right now. We know we need to work on it, and we see the Learning Commons model as an opportunity to facilitate that learning even more deeply with our students.
Go ahead, trustee McAllister. One more, and then I'll move on, and then I'll come back to you, okay?
Thank you, Chair. Trustee McCray and student trustee Castleman touched on a topic that I have been asked to bring. that I have been asked to bring forward with regard to the new library concept. And that is the use of the library by all students, especially senior students who perhaps are on a spare or a study period. My understanding is that in some cases, these students are not allowed or invited into the Library Resource Center. And I'm not sure that they're looking for the use of the library. They're looking for a quiet space in which to work, in some cases. How can we balance this and address both issues?
Director?
I'm going to invite Ian and our two gentlemen. One of the things that we have, and I totally agree with what trustee McCray said earlier, as being a longtime library person myself, still enjoy working to this day in the library. It has to be a combination in our large libraries of creating spaces that can be for quiet and spaces for research and spaces that we're going to be heavily involved in computers. I think you're going to see vast majority of our libraries now with significant numbers of computers and kids working at them. But the kids have also told us, and I've met with hundreds of kids now, they said they want a quiet space when they need to work quietly. But they also need a space to work in their groups, on group and team-related projects in the sort of same area. And then they need the ability to move quickly back and forth into those. But they also told me very, very clearly, trust us as we go through too. And the Wang Yang man was more animated when he said, "They're trusted to make this deposit, but they're worried about a National Geographic." I said, "No, I trust you with a geographic as we go through." So I think it's something that we have to deal with. And I think that we have to honor all the voices that are going to be in our Learning Commons and when it's open. I've been in each of the three programs now that the guys have talked about up there. And I think that we're going to find the quiet spaces, and we're going to have to talk about design. Ian, would you comment, please?
Well, I think there's still that need for, I guess, quiet or independent spaces. I know in my own head, sometimes that means that the earphones are in, rather than a space. That's one way that some of our students seek out that. We have greater flexibility too. So for example, it used to be if you had to have the quiet space with the information with, you had to go to a room in the school. And I think if you think about Wi-Fi and being connected, it's quite possible you could access your information in a variety of places. So that quiet space may not necessarily have to be a library. Maybe it's an unused classroom. Another corner of the school that may be, given how technology has changed, could become that quiet spot. I think it's hard to make a general solution that would apply to every school and every physical space that we have. I think we recognize it as a need, that students need those quiet places to reflect and work. And again, as Director Thomas has said, you know, learning is a social experience, so we also need places where students can congregate and not maybe be at cross purposes with the two. So I think we have to look at each of our schools to see where we can find those spaces that support that kind of student learning.
Mr. Dawes, Mr. Ferguson, you want to add anything to that?
Just if I could, Chair. The idea of whole school, I think, provides opportunities that are going to be unique to each building. And as we move forward with this, there are going to be opportunities for principals to work with their students, to work with their communities, to look at the spaces that are available throughout the school, and make very, very flexible learning environments that also meet the needs of quiet areas.
So why can't it be done now? Like, why can't you just, why can't you allow the students to use the library, senior students to use the library now, unsupervised?
It's got to do, in many cases, with the history and culture of the school. Some schools, you have senior students who have roles to play. In some schools, they do not. You also have the culture of the staff. The staff and how they've seen the use of the building. And then you need the supervision and the age of a group. I know this, if you have a large cafeteria open and you have a whole bunch of sevens and eights, that they need close supervision of what they're doing. Whereas opposed to if you have, you know, a class of, a grade 12 class sitting there, they will not require the same level of supervision that you go through. It really, again, is differentiated supervision based upon the needs of the learners that you go through. And so, you know, it's, what you want to do in the Learning Commons that I've seen are working well, you have at any time three and four staff. You can have a technician, a learning resource coach. You could have two teachers working on different things that are going on, and the library's open the whole day. But there's different cultures in schools that work in different ways. And what we're going to have to do is present a model, as Phil has said, as Ian has said, that really, really speaks specifically to that school and the nature of the clientele of that school is serving. I know Matthew wanted to say something as well.
Trustee, student trustee Castleman, do you want to just speak to that point?
Yeah, just to quickly add. You know, last year, I had found that staff were more strict when enforcing the MSUP students were the only ones allowed in the library for study period. Students on spares had to go to either one of the hallways or the CAF. And this year, it's been a lot more lax. And there's actually a sign-in sheet in my school's library that enables a certain amount of students on spare to come into the library. So at least this year, that situation has improved dramatically.
All right, I'm going to come back to you, okay, trustee McAllister? Trustee McMillan?
Through to the chair. It should be no surprise with anyone who knows me and my background in education that I find this very exciting. And the reason I find this exciting is this is now an opportunity to move our schools, move our system into the 21st century. And we are 10 years going into our 11th year. And I see this as a very courageous and a very positive step. And I know there are logistic problems that are attached to it. That does not concern me. What I'm proud of right now is the fact that we're taking those steps and we're going to make it happen. And we have to make it happen if we're going to be competitive in this world. We're going to have our kids be competitive in this world. And it's well documented, well researched, that we cannot continue to do business the way we have been doing business for the last hundred and so many years. We can't continue on this path. And we have to draw a line in the sand and say, now is the time for change. And I see this as a very positive change. And along with this comes the responsibility of showing students that tools have responsibilities attached to them. And these are only tools, but they're only effective if they know how to use them in a way that is to their advantage and not have the tools use them to the advantage of the people that are producing these tools. And I see, I see down the road that in our system that we will be putting a lot of time, a lot of effort into educating the students how to use these things effectively and in an ethical way. Because ethics is extremely, an issue that is very deeply involved as well. But this is where the world is going. And I applaud us for taking the steps to move forward. And I, like you said, Chair Petersman, why not now? We can keep saying soon, 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 but I think the time is now. And so I applaud you very much for this. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee McMillan. Trustee Kirkner?
Thank you, Chair. Just a comment. I've been visiting several of the schools in Ward Number 10. And the newer schools, I'm noticing that the libraries are, tend to be larger. And there are certainly less books compared to the day when I was in a classroom and using the library as a resource center. As a book lover myself, I do hope that whenever we are taking those tired, worn-out, nonfiction books off the shelves, that they aren't ending up in a dumpster somewhere. That there are a lot of schools in other countries that are a lot less fortunate than our children. And that we consider putting those books to good use in other areas of the world and let them benefit from it since we seem to be moving out of the textbook, or not the textbook, but the reference book area and into the technological world. I want to see them used properly elsewhere, not thrown in a dumpster. Just a comment.
All right, thank you, trustee Kirkner. I'm going to come back to you, trustee McAllister. I'll come to you.
Just a, a, a.
Okay, go ahead, trustee. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Apology for buttoning. Just out of curiosity, I don't know that you can answer or not, but when I was with the Library Board in Perth, the most contentious decision we made was to quit buying encyclopedias and go to electronic media. Do school libraries still buy hard copy encyclopedias?
Through you, Chair. Not that I'm aware of. As a principal, I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't be buying hard copy encyclopedias. I know, you see the notices come out. If anyone would like them, we have an entire set. So I don't think anyone's purchasing them.
Trustee McAllister?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the director's comment and his assurances that there will be quiet space somewhere, whether it be in the library or elsewhere, provided to students. But I have a practical question with regard to funding. My understanding is that the ministry funds the school board for teacher librarians. And how is that going to be addressed at this point? If we're not using teacher librarians, can we use the money? How is the money being used that is given us? Or has the ministry model kept up with what we're doing?
Through you, Chair, trustee McAllister. The funding format hasn't changed in such a long time on this particular one. We are still funded at per 1,000 students. It's a very Toronto urban-style model where the average school is 1,000 or more, and we're delivered 1.1 of this per 1,000 and 1.6 of this and so forth. So it's not a real friendly model to, a school system has 20 schools, about 400 to 600 kids. Produces is less than a librarian per school. As you take a look at the, so you take a look at the whole system. And I think what we have to do is continue as we learned through the elementary panel, through the struggle with declining enrollment when we started to push ahead formula things, saying, if a school's a school, then it should be funded with the following. And certainly, at that time, the Minister Kennedy was sensitive to that particular type of funding. I think what we have to do, and boards of our size with large, small school populations, is making the case, a school to school to school. So perhaps funding should be aligned on a school per site basis. And that would get us to a situation where we'd have a librarian per school and other types of resources that come down. Guidance is another one that's impacted by other numbers. Where, so it's per thousand population where it's served. And I think we have to recognize that that funding format, I don't believe has been touched in over 15 years. And it's still a very urban-style, big school model. And we have to make a strong case for changing. We have more schools than librarians.
Right, because if you have a school like Seaway and North Dundas that might equal 1,000, but that's.
Could potentially produce 1.2 or whatever the. I don't have the formula at fingertips, Mr. trustee McCauswell, but that's what's holding us back, that style of formula.
Right.
Chair Petersman, may I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, I guess one of my biggest concerns on this is also for children that don't have internet access at home. And what is the accessibility for them to do projects if we're getting rid of, per se, nonfiction books? I know we have our local libraries, but they're funded by the municipalities. And then are we not, in fact, turning over some financial implications to municipalities?
Sorry, could you just, the last part of your question, what was that?
Well, if we aren't having, if we're going to be getting rid of nonfiction books, some old ones, I heard. But basically, I guess my question is, are the books going to be there for the curriculum, for the children to take home to complete projects? Because not all children have internet access. Especially in rural eastern Ontario, there are so many municipalities that don't have high speed. And there's many people that still don't have computers. So I just am concerned about the children that are in these situations and will they have access to the learning materials to complete their projects? Without pushing it on the local municipalities to have to supply them to their local library.
Director?
You raise a good point, trustee Swan. But let me break your question down into two parts. And I may ask Ron Ferguson to respond to. This isn't about computers. It's about doing business differently in our libraries and our schools. The weather, we have texts to take home. We do still have libraries filled with texts that can be taken home. But we also have teachers teaching the Ontario curriculum. And that curriculum will be taught appropriately in the classroom. And the teachers would have to make the appropriate decisions on what could be done at home and what couldn't be done at home in the classroom. But with the Learning Commons, it's really, is going to help, as you've just described, situations where a young boy or a young girl may be in a home that doesn't have a computer or they don't have a high speed. In fact, the Learning Commons will be an opportunity to bring some social justice and equity that they'll be able to use the library. And we'll find that many of our kids will be using that because they can't use their libraries on. The other piece is that we're looking very closely into this particular Learning Commons, is that the library may be open earlier and longer so that kids who are at home without computers would be able to use the Library Learning Commons computers extensively at that time. Ron, could you elaborate further from your perspective?
Sure, through you, Chair. I appreciate the trustee's comment. And I like what Director Thomas just said there. And that's, that's why, part of the reason I'm really excited about this is because those students that maybe don't have access to those resources, we want to provide them those resources at school. So, you know, going to a model that allows them to really access resources and information anytime, anywhere, on any device in the school, instead of just the time normally that maybe we would take, be able to fit into the schedule to take them down to the library at the school. It can be, they can be doing this in their class all the time, researching for the six hours that they're in class on all their projects and using, having those tools available to them. Unfortunately, sometimes with the limited resources you might have in a library, you can't have everyone having all those resources. The internet is amazing for that because you can have every person in the school looking at the exact same resource if they wanted to or accessing the same online encyclopedia. And to me, I appreciate your question. And I see this as an opportunity to expand those opportunities for those students.
Go ahead, Director.
And.
Thank you.
Finally, trustee Swan. We, the committee, and both Ian and myself have engaged our local municipalities. And we have been speaking with the chief librarians for many of our different communities. And they are moving with us in this particular model. And I thank the Brockville Chief Librarian for getting us onto the Ontario Library Council. And also the Cornwall Library people who are also helping us to take a look at what we're doing. And also a couple of the other jurisdictions who are dealing with the issues in many of our small rural communities. The local library that is sometimes only open one day a week. And we recognize that with the local municipalities, with library services being cut in a variety of places, the community, we were really looking at the school to really be a hub for knowledge. And that we recognize that we have to work in partnership with our communities as well on this.
Any other comments or questions? Well, no one objects. I'd like to ask a couple of questions. One of the outcomes you list is supervised student access throughout the school day. And that's, that sort of flies in the face of some of the things we've talked about in making conversations around making the library or the Learning Commons available unsupervised. So when you say supervised, does that mean direct supervised? Or is this just ensuring that the students are safe but not necessarily having an adult in the same space?
Thank you, through you, Chair. What we're seeing with some of our schools right now is the issue around supervision is due to a limited interpretation of the accessibility of the library, in this case, the Learning Commons, as it relates to the time afforded by the library technician. We're suggesting that with library tech, reviewing the role of that position, and the accessibility of the Learning Commons space by other staff in the school as well, you've now opened up the library so that it's supervised for students throughout the entire day.
Okay. And can you give me a sense of what you mean by a flexible learning environment?
It's been really interesting, Chair, through this process for me to see, when I had a site visit, for example, to Thousand Island Secondary School, and talking to the staff in the school about how their Learning Commons environment has provided opportunities for different classroom teachers at different times of the day to come down to that teaching space and then. space and then share with each other teaching plans, learning plans. And this has had an effect of really opening up the learning styles within that school and that's what I'm saying in the context of this project of what we mean by the term flexible. It's opened up opportunities for the development of flexible learning environments.
Any other last minute comments? Let me have a, go ahead.
Hi, I have one.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Swan.
I just wanted to ask, is the rollout targeted at secondary schools first and then the intermediate second or is this gonna be a rollout all at once? Are we having particular schools that we're gonna target for a test market kind of thing?
You wanna talk a little bit about the, do you wanna do that Director?
I'll start, a great question, Trustee Swan. We're trying to take the best practice that we see happening and getting it into our schools as fast as we can. Student trustee Matthew Kaffman brought the point that last year we had this and this year we had that. And one of the reasons why we made the change at BCI was because they found out that other schools were doing some things differently and the administration and the teachers in the school responded in an appropriate manner. What we'd like to do is scale the secondary first and then take a look at, at the same time, take a look at our new K-6 schools, what they need as we go through. And just a point of information that perhaps you, Trustee Swan, would liken the rest of the board, John, with the new modern technology, you can sit here and do your work to give the exact figure for the, for the number. Secondary is 1.1 per 1,000 and elementary is 1.31 per 1,000 students. So as you can see, as I said, that we have more schools than we have potentially librarians as we take a look at.
One of the things I think is the most beneficial parts of this whole conversation is that, is the focusing, the refocusing, I think, on teachers, schools, learning resources and students because it seems to me when I went to school, it was essentially a given that anything that appeared in a book was the truth. And as a precocious child, it used to give me great joy to find errors in encyclopedias or whatever, in books. Hard to believe, right?
It's hard to believe.
Yes, and probably somebody here who can, yes, who can agree with that, has firsthand evidence. So I think it's, it's really useful that we have that and that that's, that becomes a focus on how we talk to our students about resources. And I also think that an emphasis on sort of the, the tasks and skills required to do effective researching is something that could be reinvigorated and reinvented, I think, in this. So that's really, I think, one of the more interesting parts of this whole conversation, that over and above the change, it's good to have these talks again because I'm not so sure that a lot of that actually went on. Like the, I know the idea was that the teacher librarian was supposed to help with researching, but I'm not sure that that's actually what happened. It seemed to me they spent a lot of time supervising the stacks or handing out the chessboards. And so I think that it's good, I think it's great that we're having that conversation and looking at that. Trustee Kirkner?
Just a comment, as I listen to Phil speak and Mr. Ferguson, I think we've been there and we have been there for many years using our resource, our libraries as resource centers whenever we lost the use of a full-time teacher librarian. And I'm glad to see that we're going into the 21st century, but I know that teachers in the past have used that and used it with partners from other grade levels as well. So this is not going to be something new to a lot of the staff that's in our schools. Just to make that point, I've seen this before, so it's, it's not new. It's got a new name.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee McAllister.
Just a final- The Director, there is, there's one party here that we perhaps are not including, or at least I haven't seen their concerns addressed, and that is parents. And obviously, parents, many parents have a more historical concept of what a library is. What steps are in your plan to help facilitate parents in the changes that are being proposed and the culture that is being proposed?
So you're asking, do we have a communication plan, really?
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee McAllister, again, good question. But we have, in the process, Superintendent, Associate Director and I have met with hundreds of people, many of them parents, and you captured a bit of the spirit. The students are pushing for a different way of doing business and many of the parents are remembering, this is how I went to school, why isn't it going the same way? And then what we're gonna have to recognize and perhaps we're guilty of it tonight, I think we have to, these presentations of Phil and Ron, is talk about the history of why we're here and the fact that we've already had many, many meetings with parents from Elmont to Tugwa to the different places who have said, we have to do things differently in our, in our libraries in order to be successful. So that's one of the pieces that's come up very, very loud and clear that we have some disconnects with the very parents going, well, this is what, but the kids are saying this. And one of the pieces that was, came up very, very loud and clear to me, in Elmont with about 50 people around the table, was the student voice. They want to be heard on this, they want to be, to be talking to because clearly to me, the young lady who was as direct as anyone is in these discussions, and this is a student who's going off to university next year, she said, "I want to be trusted when I'm in the library." And she was one who also talked about a quiet place to go and work. And she said, "Well, that was locked and turned off because we couldn't get the staffing the right way." She felt it was particularly for her, that you're saying you don't trust me there. And we can't ignore that voice as we go through. Yet at the same time, a parent was saying, "Well, you shouldn't be in there unless there's a teacher, an adult in there." Yeah, I had to explain to the parent, if you have two 12-year-olds in there, very different experience than supervising two 18-year-olds, although that can change in places too, as you take a look at. But I think we have to have all those kinds of, and so just a bit of direction, I think what we should do, Phil, as we take this out, is talk about how we got to hear and what were the voices that forced us into this situation. Do you wanna comment on, on Trustee McAllister's question? The parents, the parents' voice in this?
Again, point well taken. I'll suggest again, we're only at a point now where we're talking about implementation phase. I did mention earlier, we know and continue to know that communication is always our largest challenge throughout our board every time we take on any sort of a crew project or project in general. So I appreciate your reminder on that. You'll be seeing more information as we proceed about the communication planning on this and all of our stakeholders, all of our partners in education will be a part of that planning process, so thank you.
So when is, when do you expect to be in a position to provide an additional update to us?
We're in a situation here to have an impact on the planning cycle and the allocation of resources, we're gonna have to come back very, very fast. We're talking a turnaround probably in a month.
Okay, I'm not sure that you necessarily have time to work out some basis for a communication plan, but I think the point that Trustee McAllister raised is a key one. So maybe not in this first reiteration, but the next, at some point in the next six to eight months, it'd be great to see what your intention is on how you're gonna communicate the changes and how it looks to parents and beyond parents to our communities. Because it'll be important that we have at least their understanding of what we're doing with this for, for a lot of them, this'll be brand new. All right, anything else?
Chair Petersma, can you, people just speak up a little bit, please?
Okay, I will do that. Cut in, if you're not hearing somebody, just cut in and ask them to do that, okay?
Yeah, a little louder.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Dawes, Mr. Ferguson, for your presentation. And we won't ask where Mr. Mills is, but tell him that we appreciate his work on this too. And we look forward to seeing you back with the next iteration. This has been something the board's been interested in for quite a while, so you can see the questions, lots of interest in it, so thank you. All right, we'll now move on to the next item. We of course are not gonna proceed with the occupational health and safety report this evening. We will however go on to the Budget 102, historical perspective. Mr. Gales?
Speak up, right? Project.
Greg, before you get started, I just wanted to let you know that I'm online at Susan Richardson.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I figured that was you. What time did you, it was about 20 to 8, right?
Yes, it was.
Okay, just make a note of that. Yeah, sorry, Susan.
You guys were busy discussing.
Are you ready?
All right, the floor is yours, Mr. Gales.
I'll try to speak up. As I think some people may be following this on their own computers at home and listening as opposed to watching it on, on the, online, on web, I'll refer to each slide as I, as I go forward. Oh, well, sorry? No, it's okay, yeah, it's okay. I was trying to get rid of that down in the corner, but it won't-
Can I just interject here for a minute, Chair Petersma?
Yes.
Just because we're all new and I know Ann's on there, I'm, I'm watching the podcast and just to suggest it, Ann listening on my phone at the same time and that way she can see the presentations as they're live. It's just a suggestion and we're new to this, so that's all I wanna say, okay? Thank you.
Okay, now I've got slide, pardon me, I've got slide number two in front of us and we're looking at a list of the topics we're gonna cover briefly this evening. We're going to talk about crew, the purpose of budget, EQAO, historical spending, economic update, and there's obviously room for discussion. I think the, we're now looking at the slide number three and the question about crew and why is crew important and what is it about? Well, trustees drive the budget through the strategic plan and they drive the budget through the vision, mission and values of the board. And so the crew, moving on to the next slide, is our strategic plan and it makes sure that we're coordinated in terms of those issues of vision, mission and values and that those are known throughout the board and that we have one goal and that goal is 90% graduation rate. And so this is the filter that we use to measure what we're doing. This keeps us coordinated and this makes sure that we're all moving toward the same goal. Moving on to the next slide. And so the inference then is to reinforce the understanding that the purpose of the budget is to support the strategic plan. And the purpose of the school budget is to support the school improvement plan. And this is the only way that we can make sure that we're coordinated and moving forward. And so as we do this, we then talk about measuring the impact and results of the decisions that we've made. And this will be slide number six. And so when you, when you go forward and you start to measure the impact of decisions, what are those, what are those things that we're looking at? And so you have EQAO results, you have them for the overall board, you have them for special education, and we also look at, at historical spending and the impact of the decisions that the ministry has made. Because as you recall, the influence on the ministry and the funding has grown exponentially over the board. And so as we take a look at the EQAO results, we can see that on slide seven, that in all elementary subject areas, there has been an increase of about 45% at the beginning of amalgamation up to 65% now and the target of 75%. And so as you take a look at the impact of decisions, you see the growth- I'm sorry?
Okay, go ahead. Did you keep projecting?
You, you see the growth in the, in the results by the organization being focused on the outcome of, and the, and the strategic plan. And when you take a look at grade nine academic math, you see the same growth from 46 and 60 to 74, 77 and eventually 90 is the target. And so these are the things that drive us forward and these are the things that help us measure the decisions that we're making. In terms of applied math, while there has been exponential growth, there is still more room to improve. And that was, that was slide number nine. And as we go on to slide number 10 and take a look at the grade 10 OSSLT results, we can see that they have gone from 63 up to above 80, with still a target of 90%. And so that the strategic plan focus has had us focus on results. If we were to look at the EQAO achievement by special education students and in the elementary, grades three and six, we can see the results of the Upper Canada District School Board exceed the province and have continued to grow from 29 to 42%. And this is the result of work that this, that this board has undertaken. And if we take a look at the grade nine achievement, we can see growth and still room to improve. And grade 10 special education OSSLT growth and room to improve as well in secondary. If we take a look now at historical spending trends. And if we take a look at the total operating, and you'll see that in about 2004, 2005, our spending exceeded the revenue from the ministry. And this is when the deficit was created and you can see that from 2006 up until 2009, 10, the spending was lower than revenue and that's when the board repaid its deficit. The line going from upper left to lower right is decline, is the change in the enrollment over those periods. And so now moving on to the next slide on historical spending trends where we take a look at classroom teachers. And in the area, in the year of 2004, '05 and 2005, '06, the ministry was not funding teaching, classroom teachers and classroom expenditures to the level that the board was, boards across the province were spending. In 2006, 2007, they didn't add more money to the formula, they simply moved money from the flexibility fund into the classroom line. So there was no more money generated holistically, it was simply moved into that line to make it look as if they were funding classroom expenditures to a greater level than they were. The board has continued to increase its spending level at a fairly constant rate over that time period. You'll also see on the next slide, looking at supply teachers, that the funding has been fairly constant because it's based on the number of, it's based on enrollment increased by the rates paid to, paid to supply teachers. But the number of supply teachers and the expenditure has also grown at a far greater rate. And the reason primarily for that is that the, there has been a tremendous growth in the number of teachers that we have in front of students and you'll see later why that is. And so there are more teachers in the system and the opportunity for absenteeism has grown with them and the funding from the- with them, and the funding from the ministry has not kept pace with the teachers that they've added to the classroom. In terms of principals and vice principals, you'll remember in the early days of 2002, '03, there was far fewer, far less funding for principals and vice principals than there is today, and that was changed particularly for rural boards in 2004, '05, where it was recognized that the principal was the important, was an important educational leader in the schools, and funding was provided for that. Library technicians in Upper Canada have been in existence since about 2006, '07, perhaps before that. However, the funding from the ministry has not kept pace at all. In fact, it's one area that is not funded by the ministry. Virtually, there's no funding for library technicians, any that is, exists in the elementary system, and it's about 130,000 a year at this point. However, the upper line on this slide shows the board's expenditure for library technicians, and you had a discussion about that a moment ago. Pardon me. In terms of instructional supervising monitors, and you'll see in a moment, the ministry has decreased the amount of time that elementary teachers are required to supervise students. In order to make up that difference, the board in 2007, 2008 began the process of putting instructional supervising monitors in schools. The ministry didn't begin to fund that until one year later. You can still see, however, that there's an enormous gap between what the ministry funds and the requirements is defined by the principals and by the collective agreements. School offices, and this refers to the support staff in school offices and others in that area, and you can see that since the early times, there has always been a need for more funding to balance off against the expenditures in this area. School offices are not adequately funded. Board administration, and you can see in this graph, in about 2003, 2004, there was a decrease in this area, as well as in 2006, 2007, as the board moved to decrease overhead as we went forward and tried to match board administration with funding. In terms of school operations, there was a portion of funding used between the years 2005, '06, and 2009, '10 to fund the capital deficit out of school operations in facilities. In transportation, you'll see that in about 2004, '05, there was a concerted effort to decrease the deficit between revenue and expenditures in transportation, and essentially now, transportation operates more or less at break-even points. And that's heavily influenced by. Almost tripled, and expenditures have been brought into line. This graph represents the expenditures in special education. The zero is the line at which revenue or grants and expenditures equal one another. As that line goes up, as the green dotted.
It's green.
Triangles go above the line, that means that SpecEd is operating at a deficit. As it goes below the line, that means there was a surplus in SpecEd. And you'll remember, in about 2004, 2005, the ministry, under Mr. Kennedy, provided huge increases in grants for SpecEd during the summer. And then, when they were not used, he took them away, and the board then moved into a deficit position as it moved to spend, implemented SpecEd plan and spend those funds. In about 2008, 2009, we started to break even, and then there was an accounting entry in 2009, 2010 that shows a deficit, but what that is, is actually grants that were prepaid to be spent in 2010, 2011. And so that line now goes above into a deficit position. In terms of teacher assistance, and you can see the board's expenditure pattern, and you can see the revenue pattern, and the big dip in 2004, 2005 is when Minister Kennedy took the SpecEd grant away from, or the SpecEd surplus, rather, away from the board. However, the board continued to spend and implement its special needs plan, and you can see the level of expenditure and revenue are close to matching now. However, expenditure still exceeds the grant rate. This slide shows the ministry funding level per thousand students for EAs. So the ministry will fund 10 EAs per 1,000 students within their formula. The blue line, the diamonds above that, show the board's expenditure rate of 15 down to 12.9 EAs per 1,000 students, still exceeding the ministry's standard. The next slide shows the EA hours aligned with the number of students of exceptionality. So as the number of students has decreased, the number of EAs has also decreased in total hours across the board. In terms of wages and benefits and hours per day, you will see that the line shows, the blue line, shows the number of hours per day that EAs are being compensated for, and the bars show the average salary that is budgeted for EA. So that in 2011, 2012, the number of hours per EA will go up to seven, and that was part of the PDT agreement that was negotiated between QP and the ministry. And you'll see that the average rate that we'll be budgeting for 2011, 2012 per EA is in excess of $46,000. Now, the impact of ministry decisions, and you can see, and we demonstrated this in Budget 101, was that the ministry has added an enormous amount of money on a per-grant basis, on a per-student basis for grants. So from a low, about 10 years ago, of about $7,000, the ministry has added now about $11,000, money to bring that rate up to about $11,000 per student as we go forward, and you can see that the number of students in Ontario has been changing in the opposite And so one of the things that has occurred, of course, is they've been adding money on a per-student basis, but they've also been directing where that money is to be spent. And you can see that the average cost of a teacher, and this includes salary and benefits, has been on a steady incline, and it's based on. Experience and education of our teachers and the benefits, but you can see that it's about $90,000 and $93,000 for elementary and secondary respectively. You'll also see that the number of teachers per student has been declining over this period because of PDT agreements, because of population, and because of collective agreements. And you can see that the average now for elementary is just above 16, and secondary is just under 15 students per teacher, based on ADE. You'll also see in this slide, and these have all been driven by the PDT agreement, the preparation time has been increasing for elementary teachers, and the supervision time has been brought down. And so what this means is we need more teachers to cover the same population. This is the supervision time per secondary teacher. APAs is alternative professional assignment, which is, oh God, what do they call it? On calls. And you can see how that's been decreasing, the amount of on calls have been decreasing over time. And the prep time has been held steady. The last thing that we always look at, and we haven't had an update, and we won't have one until probably June, May, May or June, and this is a year out of date, but this was a slide that showed what had happened to the Ontario economy in 2008 through 2010 during that recession, and the forecast for the province to get itself back on an even keel in terms of expenditures and revenue. And you can see that that won't happen, they won't be out of debt on this plan until 2015 was their original plan. So education has been well-treated over the last number of years, and we can only hope that that will continue. That's a summary of our historical spending patterns and some of the decisions that have driven those spending patterns.
No. Yes, thank you, Director, for pointing out. You owe $270 to the Champions for Kits, because you're at 37 slides, I think, and 27 slides over the allowable 10, so you can make the check out to, not out to, but you can give it to.
The treasurer himself.
The treasurer yourself. We'll look forward to seeing that. Thank you. Get Nancy to Barclay and gang to chip in if you need to. All right, thanks very much, Superintendent Gales. Comments, questions? Start with you, trustee McMillan.
Just one question concerning slide 29, because I know that's going to be the slide that's going to generate the most discussion beyond the board meeting. I had no question, no concerns about teacher salaries and the way they were calculated. I do have concerns about the EAs, because I know there will be concerns that when you look at their salary and the benefits, how, and I'd rather it be in an open discussion like this than to try to have me try to explain it behind round telephones and so on. So could you explain to us how their salary is calculated with their benefits to get those specific numbers?
Part of the PDT agreement required that boards add time to EA hours. So at that agreement table, the EAs there traded more hours for fewer jobs, essentially, because the amount that we received is fixed, so that the outcome is a product of those hours and rates. So the two factors are the rates and then the benefits. So with weekends, not weekends, with holidays, sick days, etc., calculated in, the average cost that we'll be budgeting will be $46,000 per EA.
Which would be, through the chair, which would be significantly less than their salary that they're actually taking home, but there's those other things factored in?
Benefits are probably 20% in that range, and that's dental, health dental plans, and our cost of UIC, CPP, etc. So that's the cost to the board, and that's the same comparative number that we would use for any employee or any employee group. They would include the full cost of salary and benefits that the board has to pay.
So rather than looking at it as how much EAs make, it's the cost to the board to hire that position on average?
That's right. Yes, because of all of the 20% premium, if you like, on health dental and CPT, UIC, etc.
So you use it as a way to, if you're hiring 100 EAs, it's going to cost you, what, $4.3 million?
That's correct. $4.6 next year.
$4.6. Okay. Student trustee, Castleman.
Through you, Chair, to Mr. Gales. How much variance is there in that number?
Well, there is a salary scale. That is the average that we expect. Most of the EAs that we have are fairly senior in this organization, so most would be at the top of a probably two or three-step scale.
Any of the trustees that are on the teleconference? Trustee McAllister.
Through you, Chair, to Mr. Gales. I have a question with regard to. With regard to the budget. You state that the purpose of the budget is to support the strategic plan. I guess my question is this: can the strategic plan support the budget? In other words, sustainability of funding. You point out that there are a number of areas that are not adequately funded by the ministry, and yet you also state that the ministry's spending in education, the field of education, has been fairly well-treated in that regard. So there's a dichotomy here. As we look towards the future, how can we sustain what we're doing?
That's a difficult question to answer, and it's one that we go through on a continuous basis. Essentially, we can't fund everything in the strategic plan. There are limits to what we can fund, and that's the, the trick is to make sure that, and I don't mean trick, but the job is to make sure that we are focused on the strategic plan and focus the funding that we have available after the ministry directs its lion share to the best supports that we can put in place for students, and that is generally a discussion that has occurred through the strategic plan.
Thank you.
Trustee Kerkner.
Through you, Chair, to Mr. Gales. Each of the slides that you showed, except for one that I can recall, showed that the board was underfunded in most of the areas, but yet the money was spent. Where did that money come from throughout those years where we were underfunded by the ministry?
Well, each year.
Good question.
No, it's a good question. It's not an easy one to answer, because every year, there are variations in terms of numbers and how do we make this balance. And I think that the purpose of those slides was really to give you a sense of what the relationships are between the grants, the enrollment, and the expenditures, and how they've changed over time. The graphs are not fine enough in terms of their precision to show you exactly the dollar amount, but they're very close in terms of the relationships between the expenditure, the revenue, and the expenditure, the grants and the expenditure. So, you know, on that slide, it says 4.5 million or something like that. On a particular slide, maybe 4.37 or something like that. That's the precision of the graphs. Probably not answered your question adequately.
You need to speak up to, and don't speak to trustee Kerkner. Speak to your mic. Speak to your mic and then...
I can't, I can't hear.
Yeah, I can believe that.
Sorry. I'm going to go to a particular slide under historical spending, and that's like, take a look at, well, let's take a look at the first one in terms of overall spending. And you can see that it's clear on Slide 15, where we show that we've had a deficit in 2004, '05, in that period of time, and then we were able to get a surplus in the following years by making sure we allocated funds towards that. In the Slide 16, where we take a look at classroom teachers or classroom expenditures, you can see where the, the classroom funding exceeded the classroom expenditure. And that's how, during that period, funding was provided to the other areas. And so when we take a look now at classroom teachers, we know that we have to fund an expenditure and supply teachers. So we allocate money from classroom expenditures to make sure that we are able to pay for the supply teachers that are used in the schools during the year. Each of the, each of the areas has a particular approach that we have to use based on the directions that we've received through the strategic plan in order to make it balanced. Sustainability, I suppose that the increase in funding has allowed us over the years, because the ministry has added an enormous amount of money into the funding formula. But they've also generated a lot of directives so that class sizes in elementary are all specific. We have to hit those targets. Secondary is a collective agreement, we have to hit those targets. So it's a, there's a lot of, of energy spent making sure that we honor those activities. And you're right, it is a trick, it is a challenge to move the blocks around to get them to fit properly. It's a little like a real excuse.
Director?
Trustee Kirkner, you raise a very important issue to a very tight budget every single year. But the legacy boards and this board have been guilty, and so have most boards in Ontario been guilty, of when you have a tight budget and an awkward situation, we have always stolen from plan. Our roofs, our furnaces, our, our walls, our windows, all of these places are areas that there, there's no, historically, they've not put things around them saying that you can't touch these. And so what happens is, when you can't touch your class size, you can't touch a grant, you'll go to an area that you can. So what we have typically always done is sided towards a human side and say, well, I think we can fix that boiler next year or the following year, and we'll go this particular way. Or, as Rick notes, that probably one of the best windfalls ever is when we have extremely good gas prices and we have a winter where all of a sudden we had budgeted, as, as this past winter, that oil prices would be at such and such, and we were delivered almost the entire year at a windfall where we had set aside this much for paying for, of, of oil for our buses, and it came in lower. And so we were able to apply that money to other places. And the specific issue of the $10 million from Mr. Kennedy, obviously, with that level of scrutiny, every single cent and more has gone into, and this board and all of its legacy boards have always traditionally overspent in the special education line. And overspent, and the millions we've overspent, because one of the legacies of this board and other boards is that we have never, ever said no to a situation while we just can't do it. And as I've said to a variety of people who have been listening, and that's because we've, we've had so few challenges at the, at the IPRCs, we literally have not had to go to tribunal. We've had one tribunal, Ian, we've had one tribunal in six years?
Yeah, I'm thinking seven, maybe.
Maybe seven years. And to me, that, that may not be the, the, an exact measure of satisfaction with delivery of special education, but when you look at some of our chairman's boards with 10, 11, and 12 challenges to what's happening in classrooms, one of the best signs is that parents are saying, no, I get it, it's working out the right way. But no, what we've always been guilty, Lannard, SD&amp;G, Leeds and Granville, and Prescott Russell, we have gone from that line and taken it into the human line on many, many occasions. I'm not sure Jeremy would agree, we continue to do anything, we try to do less of it.
But I would, during discussions of the upcoming budget, you'll help us understand, Mr. Superintendent Gales, what lines of funding we are not, that we're taking from in order to support some of the others? Because I think that that's always something that you get asked, and it would be helpful to be able to provide that information. I know that when you provide your, your statements, you show what we approved in the budget, but it almost would be nice to see at some point what was allocated so that you could, or at least you give us a sense of what we're moving around in terms of monies.
In some areas, that's possible. In some areas, it's, it's not so easily shown. We'll, we'll try to do that.
Okay. How about you? You had a chance to ask a question?
Chair Pejusman?
Yep.
Is, is...
Chair Pejusman?
Yep.
Is trustee Swan?
Yep, I'll get to you, trustee Swan.
Okay, I, I'd just like to ask...
Yeah, I'll get to you, trustee Swan.
Okay, thank you. I, I'd just like to ask...
She's got to sign.
Okay, thank you.
Turn her, turn her volume down. Trustee Swan, you can turn your volume down of your... Perfect.
All right, trustee McPherson, go.
Okay. I'd like to congratulate Rick for keeping it under 40 slides.
You can help him pay it, though.
Yeah, right. Trustee Kirkner kind of hit on my point about where we're covering off our gaps in our funding. Could you possibly comment? Now, I'll admit, I've been here longer than some of the trustees, and in the past, we've used our rural remote funding as well as declining enrollment, top-up grants to cover off some of these overruns. Would you care to comment on what the impact will be if we see decreases in those amounts in the coming allocations? And I know they've been cutting out the declining enrollment grant pretty good for the last couple of years.
Well, each of, each of the grants is, if I may, each of the grants is paraphrased, if you like, or based on certain assumptions. For example, declining enrollment is based on supporting overhead, which the ministry realizes you can't reduce overhead at the same rate as you can variable costs. And so it's there to shelter overhead from drastic changes. Some of the, the, the really sort of difficult areas that, that come along is, is when other ministries in the government add responsibilities, but there is no payment associated with it. So Bill 168 adds work load. The BPS guidelines, the broader public sector purchasing guidelines that are coming out are adding huge workloads, and there's no resources that follow that as we go forward. So those are, those are some of the challenges. The ISMs, the student supervision in, in the, in the playground, in elementary schools, where, pardon me, there is a portion of the funding that an expectation that, that there is going to be a higher level of, of support than this board actually can, not can afford, but is, is given the grant for. But because of the number of small schools, we have to allocate funds towards that. The formulas are based on schools in, in an urban area, which are much larger. We have smaller schools, more dispersed across a much larger geography, and that recognition is, is a constant challenge. So the, the, the small schools grants, the remote and rural grants assisted in that. They assisted in getting internet into, high-speed internet into our schools. And so as those supports disappear, it becomes a greater and greater challenge to deliver levels of service that other boards enjoy, other urban boards enjoy. And so it will impact things like high-speed internet, teachers in the classroom, how can we deliver the same level of programming?
Trustee McAllister.
Chair, last, last month, we had Budget 101, and tonight, we've had Budget 102. And I certainly appreciate the opportunity to, to discourse about it and to get the information that Mr. Gales has provided to us. I'm asking, can we have Budget 103?
Yeah, it's coming.
Tied in with, for example, the, the monthly financial update and the various budget lines and what they mean and what they are, in preparation for perhaps the, the budget planning process.
So you're looking for how to interpret the, the monthly report that we get?
Yes. As well as, you know, some of the figures and how they're arrived at, et cetera.
We can talk about that. I think the next session we were going to move to, because just out of timing, was to start talking about the current year budget. So I don't, well, we'll talk with Rick and see where we are, and maybe we can do something along that lines. That would be a little bit shorter than, than Budget 101 was, and we could throw that in, too.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. If I missed, trustee Kirkner.
I think I'll defer my question till we have Budget 103.
Okay. David, do you have a comment? Maybe I didn't understand what you were saying about the replace, supply teacher line. But did you say that that line has not been increased in keeping with the increased number of adults in the system? Is that what you said?
That's correct. The ministry has added teachers through defined, sorry, smaller class sizes in elementary, the 20 to 1, the 23 cap. And so they've added a lot of new teachers into the system, but they never added the sick time requirements that, that go with these positions. So our average is one of the better ones in the province, it's about eight sick days per, per year, per, on average, per teacher. But there was never any recognition in the grant for that additional time off, if you like, sick time, for, for the teaching staff. A similar example, when we have a new class in an elementary school, we add a teacher, we can't add one teacher, we have to add one teacher plus the prep time, plus the, so it becomes 1.3 as we go forward. So when someone says, well, add a teacher, it's not one teacher, it's 1.3 teachers, because you have to add the prep time as well. And so the government's added teachers without that sick time support.
Did they forget?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. Or do they just think that new teachers don't get sick, I guess?
I think I could not answer that.
Right. Trustee McMillan?
Just, just through you on to Superintendent Gales on the same question. If, if we are one of the better boards, where you have an average of eight sick days per teacher, what, what are our schools allotted in terms of covering their supply teaching in their own budgets? How many, how many sick days per teacher are they allowed?
That's what we allocate.
We allow eight?
Well, that's what we allocate to...
To the schools?
There's a series of, and I'll use rules, but what it really means is that if, if someone is sick five days consistently in a row, then that's charged centrally from day one. It's, they pay for the occasional sick day.
Through the chair, so they are, they are allocated a certain number of sick days per teacher?
That's correct.
If it goes over that?
Well, generally, schools are, have been very cautious about not going over that. And, and have been working hard together to, to ensure that they don't. But the board, for example, if, if someone was to have a recurring treatment every Thursday with those who are charged to, to central pod, jury duty, all of those assorted things that the school really has very, very little control over, you know, trying to think of the terms, but death in the family, and those kinds of things are charged, charged centrally. There's a whole list of rules, if you like, to try and not burden the schools, but to still have them maintain a sense of ownership and direction on the things they can control.
Okay, thank you. Lisa, are you still on the teleconference?
I'm on here still, please.
So we just have trustee McCray, is that correct?
I'm here.
And trustee Richard.
And Susan, sorry, okay.
Rockland is here.
All right. So no questions then? No further questions here?
I stand here very well.
Okay. Thank you very much Superintendent Gales. We look forward to ongoing discussions and learning and getting into the 2011, 2012 budget. Sure that will be really exciting. We'll now move on to the supervised alternative learning. Superintendent Edwards, this is your agenda item. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Pejusman. The purpose of this report is to inform trustees of the changes in both February 2011 to Regulation 374-10-10, which was formerly known as SALA, Supervised Alternative Learning for Students and Pupils, and it's now known as SAL, Supervised Alternative Learning. And just to give you a bit of background, in a few situations...
Superintendent Edwards, I think your mic is covered up or not pointed at you, or is that better?
Is that better?
Yep.
Better.
All right, thank you.
Just to give you a bit of background of SAL and SALA and some of the changes, SAL, in a very few, in very, very few situations, SAL may be helpful to, for, for youth who is not attending school. It may be helpful in helping them to continue their learning and helping them to transition back to a, a school setting. The purpose of SAL is to assist the students to either return to school, or if they reach the age of 18 to 21, to proceed to apprentice training, college, independent living, or the workplace. Historically, Upper Canada has used SALA when all other measures have failed. And historically, we've had very, very few SALA students. Superintendent Ted Kennedy had this responsibility before me. I think within the past five years, we've, we have had two students come forward for, for SALA. One was successful and very successful, and one was not. There are many things in the, the regulation that are the same as in SALA, in that when a student does come forward for, for SAL, a committee must be formed, and the committee is composed of a trustee, supervisory officer, and a member of the community. What is also the same in the regulation, not changed, is that students are between the ages of 14 and 17, and may participate in work, studies, and other activities approved by the board committee if they're on SAL. And the student, when they are, is part to be, is to be regularly monitored. What is the difference between the SALA and the SAL, is there are now very prescribed timelines around that. And SAL students will be, continue to be recognized as, as full-time grad purposes, for grad purposes. What is new within the regulation is that under SAL and the regulation, there is an increased emphasis on the planning of part of it. And the, the SAL plan must include transition plans to either back to the school or transition to the apprenticeship or, or college or the workplace. And, and what is new in the regulations is that the identification of primary contact person back at the school, the school of the youth is to be transitioning back to, must be identified, and must, that person must be in contact at least once a month. And there are new administrative processes. And there are new administrative processes involved. So, the recommendation to the committee of the whole is that they modify the existing policy 108 for student attendance for compliance with this regulation. And what that modification, the only modification of this policy 108 is the changing of words SALA to SAL.
Any comments or questions? So, do you see an increase in use of this?
Not really. We, we, I don't see an increase, or that's a hard one to say. I see continuing on the very practice that we have in that when all other measures have failed. And as we work for, as we go forward with this, again, it's the last measure that's used. So, we have had a few students, and the last one we had was very, very successful. But we've had two within the past four years. To say that we'll have a few more, we may, as students are staying to 18 now. But I don't see a great increase at all, or change in our practice at all.
Trustee Karkner?
Through you, to Superintendent Edwards. Who makes the decision as to what student goes into this plan? Is it the principal, yourself, the teacher?
Here, it's done by a full team. What we have is in our schools, our students' sets teams, case conferences, the principals, special services counselors. Many people are involved. Because, again, as the student's going through, interventions are in place, see what board interventions, school interventions, program interventions, and it'd be helpful to try to get the student to attend a program within one of our schools. So, there's a whole team approach, but then the team approach would also go forward to present, if it did come, or come to the superintendent saying, "Okay, this does look like it might be a candidate for SAL," and then a committee is formed.
Trustee McAllister?
Through you, Chair, to Superintendent Edwards. I may have missed this, but how many students have we dealt with in this program in the past year or two years? That really does not reflect the need, though, does it? Is there not a greater need amongst that portion of the student population for taking advantage of this program?
Director? Susan, go ahead, I'll just take it. The, one thing that we have, and it goes back to the legacy board of SDNG, certainly picked up in the inauguration, is our TR Leges Center. And you have seen some presentations made here, but we have a robust alternative program that we would consider, the senior team would consider, a student who has to move to SALA to be a real failure in our part. This program, we got our PAL program, we have numerous programs that we would like to see that keep a tighter grip on a student who is basically saying, "I'm finished with you, give me permission to get out there and get a job." And when I take a look at this, of having chaired this with the appeal board, it's really the last thing saying, almost, "We've given up. Hopefully, you get a job, let us know how it goes." For us to have one, I would say proudly, that just to have one is one too many. But the fact is, is that when we're looking at all of our programs, just down the next door over here, 45 different kids who are the ones that you're saying who perhaps need an alternative, a different style of teaching, a different style of attendance, a different way of culture, we have, as a board, are, and we have moved to the next level there because we do not want to see someone who we sign up saying, "Well, hopefully, you get a job as you go there." So, if we have more coming this way, it would be, I think, our schools, our staff, our teachers would say, "Well, we're failing some people." And not failing on the marks, but failing in this human beings. So, Susan?
I just wanted to point out, my question was not meant as criticism.
No, no, I didn't take it that way. It was actually a good question so that we could tell a good news of a board that cares
Trustee McPherson?
When you say two in the last four years, I think I probably have been part of that process as the sitting trustee on the SALA committee a couple of times at least. I have to commend the amount of work that staff goes through to even set up one of these processes. As the director said, we have exhausted pretty all possibilities in that they still apply themselves with such diligence to try to ensure a degree of success where the student is literally disengaged from the education system. As a trustee, it's gratifying to watch how much work the school staff has done, how much the senior staff has done, the community, because quite often, they have to align them with a work placement that is willing to literally mentor that student in the workplace. It is an amazing process to observe, and I am looking forward to wishing you continued success in our non-need for, bearing in mind everything else that we do for our kids.
Any comments or questions from those on the teleconference?
No, that's fine.
That's fine. I'm fine.
Okay, so, everybody's had a chance to look at the policy and the very subtle change. I'm assuming that there is no objection to the committee of the whole recommending that the board adopt the policy? You're fine with that? Okay, all right, thank you, then we'll move that on then to the board. Okay. There's no media in the back there, I don't see anybody. Okay, just before I move to adjournment, the trustees, we've discussed, a couple of you weren't able to be part of the conversation, but we've discussed having, at the end of each meeting, having a brief, quick stand-up review of how the meeting went. And I think what we thought we'd do is just go quickly to the storehouse room, is that what we decided? So, we'll just do that very quickly. I ask that you do it as quickly as possible. It'll only be a couple of minutes. So, we'll do that right after I adjourn. Do you have a question? Yeah, go ahead.
I just have a follow-up from a parent council meeting I attended. There was a question from the chair and the committee about a presentation that was done by Ian Hill at the first parent engagement presentation, and they said at the time there was to be a DVD or it would be on the board website. And they'd been looking for one or the other to use it as a resource with council. Can you direct me as to where it is?
I have to ask...
We're going to have to dig into the, the day that he made that presentation at Russell, and it was a very powerful presentation with 50 or so people present. I can't remember that we were actually taping it, but he made reference to a DVD. And what I'll do is I'll get back to you after I talk with Mark and Terry.
Thank you.
I've not seen it, Karen.
Okay. All right, so, motion adjourned. Trustee McMillan, trustee Karkner, all in favor? Opposed? That carries great. We'll see everybody in a couple of weeks. Have a safe, happy March break, everyone.